If I could call the November 13th Board of Commissioners meeting for 2018 to order, I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, as we come upon yet another blessed Thanksgiving, I believe I speak for this board in thanking you for the beautiful mystery of life you have bestowed upon us and the greatness of this country and our community. I ask that you grant us the wisdom to make sound decisions in the name of freedom, to constantly work to limit the government's role in the lives of the citizens through our representation, and to adhere to the Constitution in matters of the common good. As always, bless our servicemen and women, veterans and serving, first responders, teachers, parents, bless the children, those who put in an honest day's work, and those that simply love thy neighbor. May God bless our President, give him wisdom and strength he needs it, and all the men and women tasked with leading our great Republic. For these things I pray, amen. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner.
Here.
Commissioner Walz.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Duckham.
Here.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Elwell.
Here.
Chairman Chatwell.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Sir.
We have a motion by Commissioner Duckham, supported by Commissioner Tompkins. Any items for removal, corrections to the agenda, additions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We have no awards or recognitions. Is there any written communication or petitions that you would like to present to the Board of Commissioners? Seeing nor hearing none, we have no special orders nor public hearings. We've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines, each individual will state their name, and have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. This is the first opportunity for public comment, please.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Stephen Terry. I live in Springport Township. I'm here tonight to talk about the bridge being closed on Robbins Road in Springport Township. While we certainly appreciate the efforts that are being taken by Commissioner Leitner, by Mr. Bolt within J.C. Dot to work towards a solution of getting the bridge funded and getting the bridge replaced, we certainly find ourselves in a very disappointing situation. Given the fact that the bridge has had its weight limit dropped twice in the past 12 years, if I'm quoting Mr. Bolt correctly, should have given some level of indication to the county that this bridge was certainly going to have to be replaced sooner or later, but now we find ourselves where the bridge has been closed. And forcing the residents that live basically on the north side of Robbins Road to have to go around, basically circumvent the bridge in order to get to their houses, this really forces them to drive down Prime Road, that I believe you heard some other residents here last week, that is my stepfather, complaining about the condition of Prime Road, and we do thank the J.C. Dot crews for getting out there and taking a look at it, but basically that road now has to support 100% of the traffic. Other than being certainly not a very good situation for those living on it and causing people to have to go around, one, the biggest fear or the biggest concern that we have for those of us living on the road revolves around the age of our parents that also live on the road, as well as some of the families on the road with children. Certainly, the fire, rescue, and police services that are dispatched out of Springport that serve our area are being now forced to circumvent that road and come in basically the long way, adding significant minutes to any potential response time for any emergency that occurs north of the bridge on Robbins Road. So, pretty much that's what has brought us to this disappointing situation. Once again, we do thank everybody for their current activity.
Thirty seconds, sir.
In trying to get us the resolution to the bridge, but certainly we are all facing a very disappointing situation. So, I'd like to have that noted and thank you for my time.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm visiting, thank you for hunting season in Michigan. I was born and raised here. My mother still has a home on, at 1-511-
Your name, sir? Your name's, your name?
My name is Timothy Gruball.
Thank you, Timothy.
I'm sorry. Her house is at 1-511-5 East Michigan Avenue, Albion, Michigan, and kind of in that corner of the county where Parma Township, Jackson County, Albion Address, Springport School District. Still, the closing of the bridge on Robbins Road, and I believe there's another one on Springport Road that's also been closed, brings me concerned to wonder about some of the other situations throughout the county and how it could end up impacting my mother's house. My grandfather served on the Parma Fire Department for 50 years, the last 12 as chief, and he retired in 84. So, myself, I'm a deputy fire marshal down in Smyrna, Georgia, so I'm constantly working with different projects and planning and plan reviews as far as fire department access to projects and areas. So, they definitely are impacted on Robbins Road, and I'm concerned about going forward, how they ended up in this situation. And is there a plan, knowing that several bridges have been condemned? How does that process look? You know, what does it work? How does it work? If this bridge was closed or downgraded in the past and then it happened again, surely there must be some kind of a plan to deal with this situation. And is there already a SOP that's in place for these roads in the county? And how, you know, may, like I said, these events affect where my mother lives and the access to emergency services at her house, as well as just the day-to-day getting around? Whereas I know efforts are being made, you know, to try to put the fire out, if you will. I work in the Bureau of Fire Prevention now myself. I'm not on the fire truck anymore, so I want to prevent fires, if you will, and so I'd like to know how you guys are looking at these situations moving forward and what kind of things you're going to put in place to try to make sure these things don't happen again, and so that-
Thirty seconds, sir.
-so that there's a problem, there's a plan to where the problem doesn't become a, oh my God, we're done, and there's no funding readily, funds readily accessible, and no plans drawn up to make it happen. So, thank you again for giving me a minute to speak.
Any other public comment? Seeing or hearing none. No special meetings of standing committees. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 16th Board of Commissioners meeting. We have a motion and support. Any questions? Corrections? Deletions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We've now arrived at the consent agenda. Entertain a motion. Have a motion and support. Commissioner Elwell and Commissioner Rice, or whoever you chose. Any items for removal from the consent agenda? Hearing none, please vote electronically. Standing Committees, Standing Committee of Affairs and Agencies chaired by Vice Chairman David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell.
Mr. Chair. First up, we have the adoption of the PACE program as an economic development tool for the commercial and industrial businesses and not for profits to upgrade the facilities to become more energy efficient, and I so move.
We have a motion and support. Is there any questions? Mr. Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had asked this to be put not on the consent agenda. I had a couple of questions on it before it got here tonight. I had concerns about whether our treasurer was supportive of it. I've had a chance to talk with her at elected officials meeting on Friday, and she does appear to be supportive of it. It's a fairly new program that I still have some apprehension about, about something that goes through the foreclosure process. It concerns me a little bit. I think overall, it's a good program, and again, I appreciate it not being on the consent agenda and able to take the time to look into it a little bit more, so I am supportive of it now with some apprehensions.
The Enterprise Group PACE program is presented before you. To vote electronically, please do. S90. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This next one is another one that I had requested not be on the consent agenda. It's the indigent defense proposal, and it's one that we've had significant discussion on. I know that the Administrator's Office and Deb have worked significantly on it. We've come a long ways with it, but it's one that I don't necessarily support. But it came out of my committee, and I think for purposes of following our rules, I'll make the motion to approve it first.
We have a motion and support. Any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Elwell. Dave, your mic's not on. I'm not asking you to repeat.
So, again, it's varying standards, and other counties have been told no on things that we have, so I'm sure there's things that we could have had that we were told no on. I see it as an unfunded mandate. I think there's, I don't have any doubt in my mind that costs of the program are going to increase. We're going to discover things that we'll need later that we'll end up paying for with our taxpayer dollars when it's the state that created this standard. Also along the lines of the unfunded mandate, part of the plan is that the state is able to capture or claw back part of what we recoup right now towards indigent defense. And I just don't understand how people can't see that that's an unfunded mandate. If they're taking money from us that we now collect and use to pay for our program, that's taking our taxpayers' money. Overall, this plan creates a whole new level of bureaucracy and red tape, and we've had this conversation amongst ourselves, I think, that it makes more sense for the state to have done this plan themselves. They're creating all kinds of different reporting requirements and red tape, and different counties having to send money back and forth, and it just makes so much more sense for them to have created their own office to do this, tell us how much we need to pay them, and let them take care of it. They've got training standards and so many other things that are just going to be a huge cluster, and I'm not supportive of creating a new level of government. I've said this before, that we're going to end up paying for both sides of the criminal justice system. We pay to prosecute those accused now, and now we're going to be paying for the defense of those that are accused. I have a huge problem with the fact that now we'll have counsel at arraignments for accused, not convicted yet, but accused, but there's not money there to have a representative of the people at those arraignments, where things are discussed like bond conditions and bond, and should somebody be released. We can't afford right now to have our prosecutor's office there. Jared will tell you that they're not, and yet we've been told no, that we can't have that funding as part of this plan. I think those are the highlights again. I'll be voting no on it. I recognize we would be in a bind if we had a majority that voted no, but I'm never one afraid to test the waters, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I'm out of order here, certainly, please let me know. I have a question actually for the Administrator. The Administrator's recommendation is that we approve and comply with the state-approved Jackson County MIDC compliance plan and the hiring of six approved positions. Are we all set for that financially and everything else?
Please, thank you. Couple things first. I agree with what Dave said, to be frank. We have a very good system in Jackson County of handling indigent defense. Dave indicated that in this proposal, we are going to be paying for prosecution and defense. Well, we already do. This is just, if you will, upping the game, I suppose, at least in the state's mind. From our perspective, we were already doing a very good job in a cost-effective way as well. Unfortunately, not all counties in the state, according to the state, were doing a good job, and they come up with a one-size-fits-all rule that they have imposed on us. Is it unfunded mandate? Absolutely. Are we going to, is it going to cost us more money? Yes. However, county government is an arm extension of the state. They do control, they have controlling interest over counties. They can pass legislation that we have no choice but to follow. We can sue in court, which Oakland County has, and, and I'll ask Deborah to fill us in on where they are on that right now, but they lost last night, I heard. I don't know if they've appealed, but Deborah, if you would tell us where any appeals are currently, if, at the Supreme Court. And two, what are the implications if we were to vote no? What has the state said that they will do to us?
So, Oakland County, the last that I heard, and I'm not sure if the Supreme Court has come out with the cases that they're going to hear, but their appeal is waiting at the Supreme Court to determine if it will be heard by the Supreme Court. If it's not heard, obviously, the Court of Appeals ruling will stand. But what happened to Oakland County is they went through a mediation process that is mandated by the state as part of a attempt to come up with a plan that works for both parties. Oakland County did not successfully come up with a plan. As a result, the state creates a plan for you and sends you the bill, sends you a portion of your bill. So, Oakland County is in the process of having a plan imposed upon them, and then the state will bill them for their portion of the services that will be mandated to them. So, that's ultimately what happens if you don't comply, in my understanding, and what's happening with Oakland County.
And thus, we've come up with the best plan we can. We believe that if we're going to consume, how do I say it this way? I'll say it. The poison, we know. We come up with our own plan, and we believe it's our best option at this point, because we think ultimately the state will prevail and impose a plan on us, and my expectation is that plan will not be as cost-effective and efficient as the plan we have before you today.
Any other Commissioner? Is that, are you happy, Carl, with the answers? Commissioner Duckham?
I don't think I'll be supporting this. It seems rather pointless. We have a system that works. I guess if you're on the defense side, you, if you don't like the system, don't participate. Don't commit the crime. But it seems rather pointless that we fund defense, then we have to turn around and add more funding to the prosecutor's office to keep the scales balanced. I'm going to vote no, and I don't even care if our administrators found in contempt. I'm voting no.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Leitner?
Well, we have our judiciary meeting on Monday, but I know that this is still a priority for Michigan Association of Counties going forward. I'm chair of that until the end of December anyways, and we've come a little ways. I hope to come a little further. I'm still not happy with the 50% that they're allocating for our grant and then, you know, reimbursing later. Not supportive of that still, but just to be, I guess, efficient and effective with what we're given now, I will still support the MIDC plan and so that Deb can submit it as well. But just know that, I know that our county organization is still fighting this fight. It's still going to continue. Obviously, we have different legislators and lancing on both sides of the aisle, so it's still a priority come the first of the year.
Other Commissioners? Mr. Williams?
I'm just going to add to the sentiment of Commissioner Elwell, that the fact of the matter is that this comes through statute, comes through law, so the legislature is ultimately responsible for putting this upon the county. If we, and this is no, this is not casting any dispersions on the job that our controller starts, she's done a great job in giving us probably the best plan that we can get out of it, but the fact of the matter is, let the state's plan come down. The state's plan then gives us something to work with our legislators to ultimately change. If we're in, if we capitulate to compliance, then we're basically, to my way of thinking, saying that we, we may not necessarily fully agree, but we're willing to work. I think that this is an unfunded mandate. I think that it's creating levels of bureaucracy and putting us in an untenable position where we're going to consistently be mandated to continue to, you know, ultimately fund our own demise. Let it come down from the state. Let the state ultimately determine what we have to do, and then allow us to work with our legislators to fix this problem. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? I guess we're ready to vote. Madam Clerk, could you post it? Who's defeated?
Kirk.
Thank you, Commissioner Elwell.
That's all I have to report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Standing Committee Human Services chaired by Commissioner Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Human Services has no business coming forward tonight.
Thank you. Standing Committee Personnel and Finance chaired by Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's two items of business tonight. Item 15A is the information technology. It's a county-wide information technology infrastructure refresh.
Michelle, our IT director's come up. This is, I know we've discussed this a couple different times now, but yet at the same time, it's a significant purchase of $1.5 million, and I want her to give a, just a brief overview again. I told her, you know, you've seen the state, give me some more sizzle, you know, what is the value added for this purchase? Given, I'll leave it to Michelle. Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay. What we have is the newly generated invoice that is reflective of the costs of the dollar amount that was funded. What we can say is there's a lot of technology behind it, and that's great for my side and people who are excited about that. What this does for us is give us opportunity. The current environment is cluttered. It will provide speed, and the value add here comes from securing our data and being able to say yes to our staff and our community. We can spend less FTE time working on a system that is better than spending time bandating things together. The other thing that we've offered is, that we can offer, some of our services are competition with the private sector. This solution is cutting edge and really will put us at the, at the top. Notoriety and possibly best in the industry, so we'll be pioneering and setting, trend-setting. The other thing I'd like to mention too, collaboration, regional collaboration with safety systems. This is an opportunity for us possibly to work with our other counties in next gen 911. Increased collaboration, and again, back to the cybersecurity piece, the costs alone would pay for a ransomware attack. Our data will be secure, and we will be good fiscal stewards to our community. Do you guys have any questions?
If I may add just a little there too, you know, frankly, it gives us peace of mind.
Right.
Right now, we are at risk, and as I think everyone knows, the courts, everything we do operates on our network and our existing infrastructure, IT infrastructure. There have been times when it's failed, and we've literally had to send home juries and everyone, because as much as most of us fondly remember carbon paper, this is not a carbon world, it's an IT world, and our technology is the backbone of our organization, and literally, when it fails, we all, all of our services stop across the county. So, I do support the purchase and the upgrade and refresh of our IT.
We're also setting ourselves up for migration in the future, preparing for where we need to be not only three or five years from now, but 10 years down the road. This will also set us up so that we're better prepared to migrate and not have to establish more Band-Aids and unnecessary repairs that we need.
I always feel compelled to explain what you're saying.
I'm sorry.
Meaning, we can expand and update and add on to our existing-
Correct.
We can add a carburetor on top of that, the blower on top of that car, right?
Right. The flex capacitator of the Krypton something.
Exactly. So, it's good. It's expandable. That's the important thing to know.
Scalable, definitely. It's very, very scalable.
Commissioner Elwell?
Just a comment, really. I appreciate the work that Michelle does, and I especially appreciate the test that you did recently of our system with potential ransomware. I think it gave us an idea just how vulnerable we could be and what's at risk, so I do appreciate staying ahead of the game technologically.
Mr. Leitner?
On the actual motion requested-
Can I have more? Just kidding. I'm just kidding. different way. If there are other things that come up into play, there are other capital funds that are under IT that we could cover any other costs that might come up. But the team that has worked with me, Dell EMC and Avalon team, have done very precise calculations in exactly what we need. So I don't expect the cost to go over that.
If I may, Chair, we, uh, we have a nine-page, um-
Yeah, I've read all of that.
That, that spells it out. We won't, and it says 1.5 million. We will not be exceeding the 1.5 million dollars.
Right. And I've read all that, but if general public on here looks at that, that summary page, you know, that tells the motion and background and current situation and financial, it's not spelled out on that summary. And a lot of times, when people come and ask us, they'll say, oh, I saw that, you know, that proposal from, you know, the undersheriff for you in particular. Now, they, they see that number there, and it's not in this part of the document. That's all I'm saying.
Is it the deficit?
I'm, I'm all totally good with it.
I can change it if you'd like to as well, just to put that in there.
I would encourage they put it into motion when they, when they make a motion, and we're good on it.
Okay.
Is the administrator controller comfortable with 1.5 million being the amount, or is there something greater?
At this point in time, we believe this is the number. Uh, and, and part of that confusion was, remember the last couple of different times, we've had the number varying from like-
1.9.
Up to 1.9 million, but as we kept paring down, trying to economize and make it more efficient, you know, we got to the base number of what we need. We believe this is the base number. And frankly, uh, technology's always changing. There will be more bills down the road coming with technology, and we'll come to the board and present our case when the time comes.
So my, my next question would be, and I believe commissioners will remember this, we spent $30 million on road equipment, and then we saw it every month, exactly what they were buying. Do you intend to come back to us and show us what all we're doing at least once a year, or every six months in IT?
As often as you would like.
So we have a comfort level there also. So, and it, I realize it got to redundancy, but I'm more than happy to, to keep looking at things so that way we know what's going on. You're going to spend on average $300,000 a year for the next five years on IT stuff. Not, you don't get to spend it all tomorrow.
Actually, this is-
This is a capital fund. This is for this one, so it will be spread across three years. But there, we'll spend a little bit more, but that's already put in the budget.
Understood?
Thank you.
I just want everyone to know going forward that we'll, that we'll be seeing it again. Okay.
I'm just curious if there was any, um, comparisons to any other products available, done, or any other bids solicited for this, this same product, or anything comparable to it?
We did, uh, the PPM, um, state contract. All the products are EMC, so per the policing, uh, purchasing policy, those products off on are there.
Any further commissioner questions? With that in mind, could the Chair of Personnel and Finance please give us a motion? Are you comfortable with not to exceed 1.5? Clarification, Commissioner Lightner?
As long as it's not in the board.
Okay. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, could you please reread the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Approval to enter into a master lease agreement and support services contract with Dell Financial Services and Avalon Technologies, Inc., partner service providers, excuse me, to upgrade county IT infrastructure, not to exceed 1.5 million.
Everyone comfortable to vote? Okay. We're going to ask the clerk to take a moment because we have to-
Who's second at the motion?
Oh.
Michelle.
Lightner. I apologize.
I apologize.
Lightner. Pass 9-0. Thank you. Standing Committee Personnel and Finance, Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have another item of business. This will be the second item and the last item. It's the administrator controller on a revision of policy 4070, standing committees.
Uh, we had made some changes, minor, so we took it off consent. Anyone have any particular questions or concerns? Otherwise, I think a motion's in order.
Okay, we have a motion in support. Any further questions?
Phil make the motion?
Oh, Phil did.
Phil.
The Chair of Personnel and, the Chair of Personnel and Finance made it. The Vice Chairman supported it. I knew what was going on. Obviously, you didn't.
That's all we have to conduct tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. We've arrived at item 16, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Hearing none. Any new business to come before the board? Hearing none. We've arrived at the second opportunity for public comment. Guidelines, our individual may please state their name. You have two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board under this public comment opportunity, and you may not yield your time. The board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Any public comment? Any public comment? Public comment is now closed. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Alwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Brother John. My microphone's tired of me already. Uh, knowing now that we have decided to not approve the MIDC plan, uh, we'll have to think about where to go from here, but I, I think that one of the options should be to consider joining with Oakland County on their fight. We can, I suppose, if this vote is going to hold, we can, uh, let the state know what we've done and just sit and wait for our medicine, or we can take a more proactive stance. And I think we should give consideration to joining Oakland County, uh, in their argument. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Mr. Williams?
Again, I wanted to reiterate that this is not in regard to the plan itself. That came from the deputy administrator and the administrator. This, it's a, it's a good plan that they put forward. This is the objection to how this plan was, was, was forced upon us. And I think we have a, we have a good relationship with our elected officials. We have an individual who's very close to this issue going up to Lansing, uh, in the next couple of months. And I, again, I, I think that this is, this needs a legislative fix, and I think this will give us the ability to do that. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Duckham?
Being over ten begins with the letter O. Does that make visitation day Wednesday?
Well, any other commissioner comments? I have one. Just to remind the commissioners who opposed it, contempt of court can be cited against the Board of Commissioners and has been in the past. So we all could be sitting together at Thanksgiving. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session, and I would ask the administrator to make sure I word this correctly, that we will be going into closed session to discuss the Gibson Crawford versus Jackson County MMRA claim number 1407906 per state law. I have a motion by Commissioner Alwell, supported by Commissioner Rice. It'll be a roll call vote. Or we can vote. Is it in front of everybody?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
We're missing two, but I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Rod and Tompkins.
I'm going to move that we accept the attorney's recommendation on the case discussed and explained in closed session.
Support.
You want me to do it twice or just wait for the doctor? Hey, I'll restate my motion, which is to approve the recommendation of our legal counsel as explained and discussed in closed session.
Yes. Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Alwell?
Yes.
Chairman Shaw.
Yes.